On my watch, it's nine o'clock. I'll call the September the 22nd, 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We do have a quorum. First of all, we have Pastor Jim Tenell from Baker's Chapel, Penn and Cost Hall in this church here to do our invocation. Would like to ask everyone to please stand and remain standing for the pledge afterward.
Let us pray. Our most gracious, kind, and heavenly Father, we ask for your favor today. Lord, we thank you for who you are, your undeniable love, and we just ask today for wisdom, God, to be departed upon each person here today. And we give you praise for who you are. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone. We'll move right on into our agenda. We have citizens' time. We have no one signed up for citizens' time, but if anyone would like to speak, now's the time to do it. Here and then, I'll close citizens' time. We have the minutes of the previous meeting. I entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting. Any correction or changes? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Six of one absent. Payment of invoices, I entertain a motion to pay the invoices. Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Pay the invoices. Is there any invoice any board member would like to discuss or ask any questions about? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay, moving right along into old business. Mr. Dalton, is there anything under old business? Moving right along under reports. Mr. Sam Crockett, treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Sam.
I do a revenue statement today. I've just worked up some information on our tax tickets once going out next week. Information on that. On our consolidated account report, we're at $46,222,616. And our general fund balance currently is $26,470,000. And the information coming around, you can see what we've done on our, one of the tops is our real estate information. Got our land value, our buildings, total values are $2,251,610,000. Our original taxes, $11,320,000 this year. Tax relief, $111,444. Our special assessment road taxes, $16,508. We had $150,432 in prepaid taxes from the citizens. And the amount due is $10,768,203. And we had $19,095 tax tickets on real estate this year. And personal property, there's a second sheet there that gives you a better breakdown of each of the individual property items. But on this top sheet, I just lumped it together. Total assessments and total taxes, $8,767. Tax relief on that is $3,150. And our license fees this year, $425,670. Prepays is $18,000. The total due there is $9,189,000. We had $25,400 tickets. Our PPTRA came out to be $1,50432. And the percentage rate, which y'all have to approve sometime during the meeting today, worked out to be 44.12 percent. That left it about $200 short, but .13 made it $100 over, so we went to the under number. And that's the, that's the part you all have to approve yet for the, for the PPTRA. Anybody got any questions?
You want to have any questions?
Pretty short and sweet.
Sam.
All right, guys. Y'all have a good morning.
Thank you, Sam. You too. And taking that 2015 PPTRA relief, we have a resolution 2015-24. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay, moving right along. Fire and Rescue Committee. Have one item?
Mm-hmm. The Fire and Rescue Committee met September 14th, 2015, and made the following recommendations. And that is to proceed with the Virginia Office of EMS Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant application for the purchase of 72 portable radios. And if that's awarded, this grant will require $19,206.52 in matching funds, which would be the part that the county would pay. However, if you scroll down, you can see that for that $19,406, we would receive from the state funding in the amount of $77,600. So, you know, it's, it's a good deal, and it will also bring radios up to date. So, that's a recommendation from the committee.
Okay, from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any open floor for discussion or questions? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Next item is Water Committee. Three items.
Just one of y'all that were here want to do that when I missed that Water Committee.
Oh, I didn't realize you, you missed.
Am I mistaken?
I thought I did. I thought I was chopping corn.
Well.
You want to take care of it, Dr. Hausman?
I, I.
Maybe I didn't, Gary.
No, I think you were here, Gene.
I've been chopping corn for the last week.
I mean.
I can't remember what I was doing and what I ain't doing.
I, I will say that the guy that was sitting on my right hand looked a lot like you.
Well, then, we'll say I was here because I pray there's not two of me.
Okay.
I second that motion. All right. The Water Committee met on September the 15th, 2015, and made the following recommendations. To accept the PER and design documents for the Fort Chiswell wastewater treatment plant headworks project, and to amend and appropriate $9,685.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Second?
Second is to procure engineering services to develop a preliminary engineering report for sewer services along Fort Chiswell Road.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion or questions?
I'd like to ask Mr. Balla a question. Is anticipated that that project would be phased to where the primary line and the pump station would go in, and then the feeders would come to that later?
We can have the proposal built that way, yes, sir.
Would that get relieved quicker to the, would that get relieved quicker to the main line service?
And we can have the cost estimate prepared that way, because what you've described, we can do the entire environmental assessment under one larger umbrella. He wouldn't have to go back and revisit things.
Right, and it saves some money, and it should expedite getting the relief down 52. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Well, I have a concern. One of the, one of the letters that we, we got requesting is, we had a letter from a couple businessmen who, and I just want to read the last paragraph of this. It says, "Lot 1, which is a tract of 31.86 acres, has been reserved as an industrial site. We've entertained serious negotiation with two entities for that tract. One entity, which later located in Washington County, Virginia, and created 300 additional jobs, and another entity, a truck tank wash, which later located to North Carolina. We've lost both of these entities to the unavailability of sewer." Now, what I want to do is, you know, just publicly encourage any business people or any, anybody who has, who is developing land, if it just comes down to, you know, to something like that, to contact the county or the JIDA. The county didn't know anything about this. The JIDA didn't know anything about this. And if we, just simply because of the lack of sewer, you know, we lost, you know, 300 jobs and tens of thousands of dollars to, to our tax base, it's a little bit, you know, disappointing that the county didn't know about it, JIDA didn't know about it, and we didn't have an opportunity to respond. So, the only thing I, and this doesn't have anything to do with the motion. I'm going to vote yes on, on the motion, but I do want to just publicly encourage anybody, anybody, if they are negotiating with somebody, you know, to let the county know, to let JIDA know, so that we can see what we can do to, to help. And I also, you know, I would be interested in, you know, in finding out, you know, since they have already relocated, it's not a secret, I'd be interested in finding out who these companies were, and if we could get in touch with them to see, you know, what, you know, what with county, you know, could have done had we known about it.
I agree, you know, that we didn't know anything about the, the two companies. That's, that's a lot of jobs.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. To procure engineering services to develop preliminary engineering report for sewer services along Fort Chiswell Road. Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Next one?
Number three is to approve change order number three and number four for the Jackson School Route 52 waterline project contingent upon approval by the funding agency.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay, next item on the agenda, Supervisor Report. Dr. Hausman?
The only thing I had, I had a call actually yesterday from a lady that was asking about children that play signs. Now, I understand now that, that the state doesn't do that. I mean, we have to, we have to approve the request, and then the, the people have to pay for it, and we have to install the signs. All right, so may I ask exactly what the steps are that somebody should go through to, to try to accomplish that?
If they'll get in touch with us and give us the location of what they're looking for, we can put together the information, send it to VDOT, and they have to do the approval of the signs, and we'll have to come up with a cost estimate to do so. We should be a little less than VDOT cost. There is $800 a sign for them to put it up, and we can come up with that cost estimate. VDOT will approve it, mark the location for the sign to go, and then we can proceed. Then enter into agreement with them and the landowner to do that.
So, I can have the person get in touch with, with you?
They can get in touch with me.
Okay, all right. That's all, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I got a question on that, Stephen. Do they have stipulations that, that it has to meet certain criteria? Is that what the VDOT's got to approve, or they just have to approve a sign period?
Generally, I do think it has to meet certain criteria for them. Speed limit, area, things like that, to where it's going.
Okay, because I had, I had one that had asked for one, and they denied it here a while back, so I was just wondering if, if things had changed, did they need to go back and ask again?
Well, apparently, I mean, you know, things have changed. I know that when, you know, the other request came to you, because the person that called me yesterday said that they had called VDOT, and VDOT said to call Board Supervisors. And now, I understand that they have changed the procedure in that we do have to, you know.
Make, make application.
Make an application. Okay.
Without?
That's it.
The only thing I have is I went to a law, a wall of honor committee meeting yesterday evening, and if you've been down to Withers Park, you can see the beginning of the Wounded Warriors Monument. I think this has been several years in the making for the county and for the town. We have, I think we have budgeted a $1,000 donation already, so I just asked Mr. Dalton to, to, I don't think we need to do any amending and appropriating because it's already been approved in the budget, but they hope to have that done and unveil it in Veterans Day on the 11th of November, so just would like to see that donation go ahead and be granted.
Mr. Dalton, is anything we have to do? It's already been?
It's not. We've asked for a copy of their total budget, just like we do everybody else, and as soon as we get that, that.
Steve Moore, he should provide that.
Mr. Hill?
I understand they've got $27,000.
Twenty-four, over $24,000 in donations so far for that. It's a good, good project, and for the Veterans Day ceremony, several of With County's own wounded veterans will be speaking. They'll be the guest speakers this year, so encourage everybody to come out. It's going to be on a Wednesday, November 11.
And it is a good thing. They are taking personal donations. I've donated. I know a lot of people, American Legion has donated. I just urge everybody to participate and give what you can.
Two things I wanted to ask again about the, the purchase of vehicle for getting the trash program back going. Did, or making any progress on that?
I have been working, the sheriff has been looking at his website. He gave the website he was looking at. I have been in touch with Department General Services down here. They are looking at vans that they have available. Hopefully, after October 1st and the new federal budget year, there may be some things released that come to them. The only thing that they had available right now, I believe, was like a 1989 or a 1993 with about 160-some thousand miles on it, which wasn't what we needed. So, continuing to work on trying to get a vehicle as quick as possible. They're unable to locate anything, and we may just put out a request for certain years and certain miles between a certain form type of van and get requests, proposals back in, and then we'll see if we can award something that way.
You can go to the open market and look for them. Another report from the district, road projects are going on on Archer Road. The rating has started and progressing. The clearance done. But Stephen, you also had a call. I've been over there twice. Major Graham Road from the brick church to the top of the hill, you can't hardly get over it. And the ditch line down the other side of that first hill is out in the road now. It's not defined as a ditch line, it's part of the road. We've got to get those people some relief over there. VDOT says call supervisor. This is pumpkin truck season. There's hundreds of loaded pumpkin trucks on that road. And if, VDOT hasn't been over there in months. I realize you can't really work, everybody runs a farm road knows this, you always work a road right after a rain because you can cut the road a little bit. But there's not anything left over there to cut, and they need some relief now. It's been two weeks since I called Andy, and they were going to get over there and look at it. Two weeks has gone by, and they still got from the bottom of that hill there to brick church, up there to where you're parallel with the interstate. It's just so washboardy, and then the other side going down the hill is all out in the road. Secondary drainage pipes out there would take care of the other side of that hill, but until it gets surface treated, there's no help for that there to church. I can't get a date of when the funding will be used to do that little section. That's about it.
Mr. McRoberts?
I have a few issues, but I give mine to Mr. Meyer. He takes care of them. Thank you.
Mr. Horne?
I don't have any issues that I know of. I will tell you, if you happen to be out my way, they're starting on the road, so it will be a nightmare.
Okay. I had one, but it's been addressed. That's all, all that I had. It's already been addressed. Next item on the agenda is the County Administrator's report. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir. Sammy?
Got a question for you. On the second page, you show these two personal properties. I assume the first list of personal property auto is the ones that are eligible for PPTR. And the second line is personal property auto, which are the ones that are not eligible.
Oh, yeah, the second line there, like machine tools and stuff like that.
Well, machine tools on down there.
No, not machine tools. The people have desks and computers, that type of stuff, is other personal property. The license fees, we had a problem with credit. We had too many license fees for the old cars we had, and we put license fees on those old cars still that never got exonerated last year. David had to go back and work on that. But they weren't supposed to have license fees still yet because of the title vehicles that are on the tax ticket, and there's still quite a few of them that didn't get exonerated last year. People didn't come in and get them off.
Well, since we only collected $300-some thousand dollars last year, there's a lot, a lot, a lot.
There's several pages of $20 the length of taxes. I've told you all that before, you know, I've got how many pages it was, but, you know, several years ago, when we didn't send out tax bills, the car value less than $1,000, people didn't get, a lot of people didn't get a tax ticket. I didn't mail them out. They didn't owe anything, and they didn't waste any postings. Now, we're sending them a bill for $20, they're still not paying it for their old cars. We have, we have quite a few delinquents with license fees.
Yeah. And does that also show up in, if you have the license fees, are the values still showing up under personal property auto?
Yeah.
So.
They showed up.
So, I guess at the end of the day.
Now, there's, there's cars under personal property auto, the first one, there are a lot of old cars on there that didn't get exonerated that do not have a license fee. Not supposed to have a license fee, or they're titled on them. They're not registered. So, you think there's too much for a license fee, or what?
Well, just looking at last year's what we collected, what's there.
What's on it, sir? Yeah.
It just seems to have to help with some of that.
A lot of licenses, they don't have license fees.
So, I have George got a question.
I'm still not clear on, let's, let's get away from the $1,000 question. The people that don't farm and run plastic tags, Sam, are they paying any taxes?
I don't know. They're not registered and don't have tags on the car. I'd say probably not.
Would you think it's reasonable, they also don't have insurance on the vehicle, and they're not paying personal property tax on it?
They're not paying personal property tax if they don't have tags on them.
Right.
The insurance, I don't know. It'd be crazy not to have it.
But don't the titled vehicles shouldn't have picket up? I mean, on the personal property, if they're titled?
Yeah, they're on there. They're titled, they're taxed on those titled on the cars, but they're not registered, so we didn't put license fees on them.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
But they're still paying personal property tax on it, they're just not paying the license fee on it?
They're charged personal property tax.
Yeah, yeah. I understand, I understand, I understand that point, Sam, but, but we're charging them that, that.
Yes. It's most of them are $300 cars.
Unless it's something that they came in and we've exempted it from taxes.
Well, like I said, last year, we had, we were well over 12,000 exonerations last year on those old cars. There's still a bunch of them on there, and nobody ever came in and said anything about it. So, they got taxed again this year for them. But, and most of them didn't pay last year either. When we went through last week and marked our 15 taxes, those back taxes, there's a bunch of them.
Mr. Dalton, is there any way the county can improve enforcement against the ones I'm talking about?
Yeah, back there in the black shirt can help.
Well, that's not going to happen in the election.
You need the guy in the black robe.
It's not going to happen till after November anyway, right?
No.
Well, the reason I bring that up, Sammy, we'll, we'll have a budget committee meeting here in a couple of weeks, but that probably affects our revenue budget a little bit. We're going to have to make some adjustments.
I'll, I'll give you the numbers on how many delinquents we were on there last year, and I can still run you a list of delinquencies in numerical order, let you know how many of those we got like that.
I think gross is more than the individual, is what I believe.
Well, that's what looks like. And there might still be some of those that got the fee on there when we hit it, if David even asked, but that turned out was a problem when we were pulling the books, getting ready to get the books, I don't know, that, yeah, go back in and make some adjustments, not put that fee on, so they're titled on the vehicle.
Well, we just, as we start this collection process, we need to understand, are we going to have all the revenue that we projected for last year for this year? And that one line, that first one's sort of a troubled number. But we'll talk about it at the budget meeting here.
I'll give you enough data to link the list on personal property last year.
Have it be publication in the paper in July? Is that probably a lot of real estate in?
Yeah, the real estate's about like it always is, pretty good. Personal property, there's more of them to do with real estate, I hope.
Thank you. The first item, Mr. Chairman, is I'd like to request the board to support the town of Withers, application to study Exit 73.
Request from the County Administrator to letter of support for the study on Exit 73. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any questions?
In, Mr. Dalton, when they say a, a study, in, in regards to what, what are they, I can't remember what they're, what they're looking for.
We made an application, you know, to look at how to improve Exit 41.
Right, I understand that.
And it's the same kind of study, how they can improve Exit 73 to be a full interchange step. I'm going to call it a half interchange step. You've got to go across the bridge. They'd like to open up the area to the east of Exit 73.
Okay. And this is all to do with House Bill 2, that we have to submit these in.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Any more questions? I'll do this, and I'll in favor of a, the letter of support, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is the With County Plan. You guys had a public hearing at the last meeting. We need to get that adopted because in House Bill 2, we're referencing all those, the new comp plan, supporting documentation. What that will have, I'll give you a clue now if you adopt it today, is with those simple changes, that when the exit study comes back, we'll have to have a separate public hearing and amend the comp plan to show who's developing plans around each and every exit. From this point on, after it's adopted, any major change to that comp plan requires the public hearing and start that process again, okay?
I know, I don't think we closed the public hearing at the last meeting, did we? Scott, did you, we was questioning where we had the...
I thought you closed the public hearing, you just hadn't voted on it, determining in the recommended changes to be made, whether they need to be re-adapted.
Yeah.
I reviewed the code and conversed with Mr. Dalton about the change. There was already references in those sections about improving interstate and exits. So with those references already in there, just the change in the details of maybe a specific exit number, you know, I don't think it's a significant change that has to be re-adapted. Once it comes back again, whatever came back from VDOT under House Bill 71 were very specific plans, and then we re-adaptize amendment to the comprehensive plan at that time, you know, to pick that up. But the change that was proposed by Mr. Dalton, I guess, for this House Bill 2 application is, I don't think it's significant enough to require re-adapted.
Okay.
The second part really doesn't deal with House Bill 2. It's the request will be hired at Mount Rogers to do a study around each one and identify specific types of commercial establishments and restaurants, the brand names, of how those areas would be developed. That's what will become the back end of it.
So when we looked at the comprehensive plan, what we were saying is that the transportation part was not 100% complete, but if we, we're gonna have to change it anyway, so if we adopt it and change is sort of significant, we have to have a public hearing on those.
But the House Bill 2 language was put in it.
Yeah. Right.
Y'all got that language, but the, what we're saying is, after Scott and I looked at it, there's charts in there that says improve 81, significant. Corridors is significant and all that. It was already in there. What we're adding is just little words. Now it says study exit 41 and stuff.
Okay.
The next part of it, with this development plan, which affects people's land and private land, it's gonna have a public hearing on it. And it doesn't have to do with House Bill 2, but it's...
That's what we've commissioned.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's not ready. I don't know when it'll be ready.
Okay.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept With County Comprehensive Plan.
Have a second.
I'll second that.
Open for it for discussion. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
And the last thing under other, if I may add something?
Okay.
At the last meeting, we talked about changing the agreement to gay services, the county attorney. This is the exact same agreement you had except for the section about pay.
Exit paragraph number four. I just added changing my rate to $150 and then the rate of the associate at $10. Still service your pleasure and obviously if you want to change county terms, you're welcome to do so. I also have the same option. Requires 90-day notice, so three months' notice to all decide on one. But everything else is the same as it, since we've been operating under this type of rent since 2010.
So the only change is a change as far as in your rate, which goes up a little bit, and the addition of your associate's rate, which is lower?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? So what we've, did we not agree on this before?
We did. We did.
But the rates were...
This is memorializing. We agreed on those rates before.
Okay.
This is just memorializing that contract.
This authorized somebody sign a contract with what you...
But the rates are still the same as what we agreed to earlier?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was confused on.
Didn't take much nowadays. Obviously, I didn't know where I was at on one day. It was the next night meeting that I missed. I knew there was one I missed somewhere.
Any more questions, comments? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Aye. Chair votes aye. Okay, is that all you have, Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Farling, county attorney's report. Do you have anything?
I had sent a memo to Mr. Dalton concerning Bearwiler Road about the right of way in there. Yeah, after researching the land records, and Stephen had given me some good background there, but in researching the land records, all of those right of ways in there are private right of ways. There doesn't appear to be any dedication to the county. A lot of times in subdivisions are made, you know, flats are approved and there's a statutory dedication that the county owns the right of ways on those flats. That has not occurred along Bearwiler Road. So we do not have, the county doesn't have any ownership right or any claim to the right of way through there. So we cannot certify that to VDOT to do the recognition of their waterway without some kind of dedication from the landowners to the county for that purpose. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, but I did that and sent that to Mr. Dalton. And they had passed it on to some of you. I don't know if you could see it or not.
Yeah, let's hand it out. Does any board member have any questions?
Well, that will basically end the opportunity to fix an ongoing problem. So we've got to start over and try to find another solution if we care to try to help those people. It further complicates life that now we can't even trust the language in a deed because it didn't go far enough or we didn't make a filing. I went back three transactions and that piece of property's always had that in there, but what didn't happen over the years was they never made a filing. I'll tell you a little historic story real quick. We renovated the courthouse in Stewart and the state got upset because we couldn't find the original occupancy permit. Well, right after 1856, a lot of problems broke out in this country and they wasn't worried about occupancy permits. But these late filings trouble me that they override what we believe is in a deed. Oratory's over.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Farling?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. We'll move into new business. We have the consent counter. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
I'll make a motion to approve this agreement.
Have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion, second, approve the September 22, 2015 consent counter. Open for it for any questions or discussion. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Aye. The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2016 expenditure budget to second quarter appropriations. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making the motion that we approve these second quarter appropriations.
Have a second.
Second.
Any questions? Here and...
I will just say, I like that we're doing it this way now.
Some do, some don't.
Oh, okay.
That's almost like. Any other questions or comments? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Mr. Farling, the VACO holiday ornament contest, do you have an update for us?
Last month, the county began advertising a Christmas ornament through VACO. The winning ornament will be displayed in the governor's mansion and we received several. We received a hot air balloon made in a bulb of an ornament. We received a hand-stitched Royal Retreat Depot, received one of the shot tower, received another of the courthouse. Just a tremendous outpouring of people. A lot of creative people with county. The county administrator staff voted, and this is the ornament here that we would recommend. It was made, I'll pass it on. Be careful with this because that'll hurt you in election time, breaking an ornament. This ornament, though, it's the Jackson Ferry Shot Tower. The county staff felt like it personified what With County is. It's on the county seal, very well crafted. It was made by Gal Blevins of Royal Retreat, and so this is the ornament we would like to see as staff members representing the county. I think that covers everything.
Are we gonna put a picture of this and thing in the paper or get it out to the public, make a press release on it?
Yes.
And I'm assuming we'll probably have a picture of Mr. Blevins, too?
Yes, sir. Actually, when he arrived, I actually took his picture. It was a good ornament, and I said, well, if you still have time, let me take your picture. And so...
Oh. He did do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dalton, is there anything else we need to discuss or talk about before we go on to close session?
Just wanna, I had a meeting last week with the town and there's a few subjects that one of the committees, the town county committee, ended up at 7:00 o'clock meeting with town of Whipple to discuss, as you know, this dispatch equipment is no longer certified, which will need, we have an opportunity in the next year or so to go back and find another vendor. We hope that the state of Virginia, through the wireless, will help fund that. I can't really tell the inclinations, they will, but that's about an $800,000 subject. The second issue, the town might talk a little bit about it, the improvements, the interchanges exit 41, 73, for the future lives there for both of us and how that's being developed. And I guess lastly, the whole issue of improvements and relationships with the town, they want to talk about some time here with that committee. We had a good productive meeting. The manager will be forward to meeting town county committees sometime in October. We'll just have to get up early. All righty, that's you, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Reed.
They have food, though.
Do what?
They always have food at their meeting. I've been a couple of times.
And I did have a meeting with the town Royal Retreat. The new manager is probably time to convene our town Royal Retreat Committee meeting and go and meet with him. I think that's Mr. Horni.
I bet Mr. Hausman's on that one.
Mr. Reed. Since they have a new town manager, a good opportunity to do that.
Just schedule it, when you go.
Do what?
I said, schedule it and we'll go.
Yeah.
Be in October or something.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go on to close session.
I'll make a motion that we go into a closed session as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A5 for the purposes of discussing prospective business or industry, and also as permitted by section code 2.2-3711A1 in regards to discussion of personnel matters.
Okay, so have a second. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. David? We are now in closed session.